Okay, now I think we're ready to begin. Welcome, I'm glad we have a good crowd. WTA is glad to see the good crowd here. I'm Belinda Dixon and I'm president of WTA. And I start out by thanking Molly Lang and Shep, she's going to be our timekeeper, and Charity who was doing our mic check. And she did a lot to get our refreshments and get a lot of this organized, her and Molly. So I want to thank them for all their hard work. And we're gonna explain, I'm gonna explain how this is gonna go. I'm gonna start, the first question, we'll start with John. And all of them will answer the same question. Then the next question Roger will start. The third question Betty will start. And each of them will answer the same question. And so, but everyone will start with a question. And they'll get two minutes. And Molly will be timing them. And she'll ring the bell. And after two minutes, after she rings the bell, Leslie will count five seconds and then she'll cut the mic after five seconds. So you'll get five more seconds and then she cuts the mic. So, and at the end, if you really had more to say, Charity will give you a copy of the questions. And you can submit those questions in writing to Jeremiah. You can take them home and, you know, she'll send them to you by email. And you can submit longer answers to Jeremiah if you'd like. So, ready to begin? Okay. First question. What do you think are the two top issues in our district? And what ideas do you have to address those issues?
So, we just had a special board meeting, discussed the forecast for the future, for the first, for the next five years. So, finance is a major concern. So, working with Laura and Scott, we're gonna have to form a plan to address our financial shortcomings. For me, the second issue is, I think, student involvement. I get to work in town quite a bit on different projects. And sometimes there's as many kids in the stands or walking around that are participating. Whether it might be a play, or drama, or band, or a high school volleyball team. I would really love to see more of our students involved. And I don't, I don't know the missing piece, so I don't have a solution for that currently. But I don't time, sometimes our students and our kids might get in trouble. So, I would really love to see more students involved with our extracurricular activities. And in our financial situation moving forward, it's gonna be tough. It really is. Wasn't looking forward to our special meeting, but Laura did an excellent job presenting things. And as a board, we will figure it out. So my two concerns, student involvement and our financial concern moving forward.
Thank you, John. Roger?
Well, John hit a wall right on the button. The main thing has got to be the finances. Where are we going? What are we doing? Where are we not going? There's a House Bill 186 that a lot of people know nothing about, but if it passes or it doesn't pass, makes a big difference. There's a little thing on the ballot that will actually be voted on soon that can take away property taxes, or reduce them major. And we are supported by more property tax than anything else since the state has decided that's how they want us to go. So that's a very, very big concern. We have to figure out what we're going to do, what we're going to move. And we won't sit and we're cut anything. We'll see what happens and go from there. The second concern, like John said, is student involvement. And you know, it used to be you had seventy-five people off for a football team. Now you've got twenty or twenty-five. Used to have a hundred and twenty-five people in the band. There's like fifty or so now. So how do you get the children today interested in being in or participating in these sports or band or drama club? As back then it was called senior class play. How do you get people involved in this is not easy. And you just talk to them and you try to get in with them and help them while you can. Because all that builds success and character and everything down the road. Thank you.
Betty?
Well, of course, the major concern is funding. You have to have money to make, make anything go. And we have three means of funding. We have state, local, and federal. And with the legislature in Columbus, it was very, very disheartening on some of the things that they funded. I understand they gave Cleveland Brown six million dollars for a new stadium. Now, I'm not against the Browns, but privately owned and I don't understand why my taxpayer's money is going to them, to the public education. Locally, there's a property tax. We get funds from that and that's our big revenue. If they do away with that, money will have to come from somewhere. So what do you do? Do you put on an income tax? Do you try a local levy? And I understand, I read on the computer today, that there's going to be limits with the type of, of local revenue that you can't generate from tax levies. Income tax, there's two different kinds that you could place on the ballot. One being an earned income tax, which that would just tax people who are earning from paycheck in the district or wherever you work. For example, myself, that I want state teachers' retirement or social security, that would not be taxed. Either way you go, it's going to take more money away from the taxpayer. And as you and I both know, one trip to Co-Prager's, and every week you get more and more. So, the legislatures, I think, have really let us down on those budgets. And some of the cuts that we might be looking at would not be easy. But I think that we would produce some creative thinking to make some tweaks in our budget to save money, have more grant writing, bring more money into our district from grants and different things, that we could still give our students a very quality education. And that's worth that for a lot of these kids' education. It's an outlet for them to...
You can tell?
Okay, so, I will agree that yes, there is funding issues, but I do think that the last three have fully covered that. My biggest concerns are the lack of teachers and the lack of classes available. We have, we have teachers who have, who have left and we haven't been able to find replacements. For instance, in the high school, we have one senior, we have one freshman science teacher and that's all we have. My son is a sophomore, he doesn't have a science class because there's no one to teach the science class. I understand that they have changed the agricultural class that is taught for FFA. And it has been converted to an ag science class, but would that count if your child was to go to college? It's not a biology, it's not chemistry. And when I talk to my kids about, hey, what do you do at school, you know? Do you guys like mix chemicals and make it spark? Or do you guys do any? No, we don't do any of that. My kid went here four years, he did dissect a fish in eighth grade, but I don't know, I remember that we would dissect owl and, no, I did not like it, I thought it was gross. But you learn something from it and you had horrible memories from high school of that, someone trying to eat you for all of it's gross. But you do learn something. These are things you need to learn when you want to go off to college. And we have kids who are going to college right now and they're struggling because they don't have the basics that they need to survive in college. They're having to repeat basic math or, you know, that should've been taught in high school, it's not being taught. Or they didn't grasp it when they were in high school and they're redoing it. And it just feels like that we are putting our kids off on a bad foot when they want to go forward. When my son was junior, he ran out of classes to take. I mean, he could've been here for a half a day, but he decided he was gonna go to Buckeye Hills. And he had already completed all of the basic classes that they offered at Buckeye Hills. So he ended up going to hybrid, where he was able to go to Welston half a day and he was able to go to Buckeye Hills half a day. And that really worked out well for him because he got to go work on diesel mechanics and learn how to be, work on engines and things like that. And now using that, what is going forward, I guess I'll cut off?
All right, first of all, thank everybody for coming. Also, I'd like to thank the Teachers Association for providing you the time. So, issues which they've all touched on, the budget, and my experience says part of the teachers, maintain teachers, of course the budget affects that as well. So that's a, that's a huge issue. And also, something that's important to me, and I think is important to everybody in the entire school system, is transparency and trust. Those two go hand in hand, and accountability. So, I think that should be a focus in the future going forward. Okay, thank you.
Second question. Fine arts programs often face cuts first when districts experience financial strain, yet they play a vital role in student engagement, creativity, and whole child development. What specific steps would you take to protect and prioritize fine arts in our schools during times of economic challenge?
First of all, I learned the question, and I'm gonna read it a couple of days. Being hard enough hearing, I didn't understand much of anything you said. So I can't answer it until I know what you said. So if you'll let me read it, or I come over there and let read it with you, I'll do that if you want, whichever. I'm sorry, but that's...
Fine arts programs often face cuts first when districts experience financial strain, yet they play a vital role in student engagement, creativity, and whole child development. What specific steps would you take to protect and prioritize fine arts in our schools during times of economic challenge?
Fine arts consists of a variety of things. And we've had some very, very good people in, that paint, that draw, that do all these things. So, we have to look at all of it as a whole and see where we can come up with things. Where the budget comes in, how it plays the major role. We, back several years ago, came back when Betty was on board and I was there, that we came back with music. And that's one of them. How do you protect that? Well, you've got to weigh it all and see where you're at. And part of that budget could help, as Superintendent Norman and I have talked a time too, that if we can arrange to put some Buckeye Hills things here and teach them and because eighty percent of the funding will come back to us, which means that helps the whole district, and that definitely can help the fine arts. I do not want to do away with fine arts, that's definitely not. Because we've had people go a long way by doing so. And a classic example from years ago, Sammy Jenkins was a great artist. And he does a lot of American green cards that most people probably know nothing about. So we've got more than him, we've got several other people out there. So, to protect them, you just gotta look at the whole budget and they're a part of it. So where can they fall and what happens there? Again, they're not gonna be in trouble, they're gonna be taught. They're gonna be in the building, we gotta do what we can. Question?
Okay, do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this has been a test case of mine for, when I was on the board, for twelve years, that they did away with art. And I was, we're good up there for years, no money for art, no money for that. So, finally when Mary Ann Hale was here as an interim superintendent, she had the same outlook about it just like this. She thought it was a stem, that the elementary kids were not having art. First of all, there's no foundation when they get art at the junior high and high school. So I think to, to keep it in our system, we could, again, write grants. The area we live in, underprivileged and so forth, that there would be grants. We could be creative with our, with our teachers. When I first started teaching in nineteen fifty-eight, there were no P.E. teachers. We didn't have a music teacher. There was no art teachers. But the other second grade teacher and I would work together. She would do, me and I would do art. So the kids did get that. So there are creative ways that you can keep it in the system. It makes more work for the elementary teachers, the classroom teacher, but by the same token, the kids are getting it. Heather does, our elementary art teacher does a phenomenal job with it. She absolutely does, and she has proven that time and again. And we have several students win awards in art. And today with all the, the mental illness and so forth that we're facing with our, our kids, that's an outlet for them, that they can express their emotions. And art is a very vital part of any curriculum. Did I go over the most? I'll go better.
Anyone who knows me, growing up, fine arts was where I was all the time. We did not have a fine arts program in high school. My freshman year is when we had to pay to play because there was a teacher strike and there was no funding. So if you wanted to do art, if you wanted to be in band, your parents had to pay. And we had a great band which was gonna help us out. We did not have drama club. Play pool, I had Dorothy Reepenhoff as one of my teachers. And she would literally let me and some other kids up in her band, and we would go to Ohio, and that's where we would perform musicals. And I did that all four years. I would try out against college kids. And we would sing in their choirs. And thankful for her because she kept me with something to do every single night. And we were able to perform. We also had this Notre who was running the choir, and we only had seven kids in choir. And we couldn't afford to do anything other than we had first period choir. And we would perform at the rotary show. And that would work for us. And so I would say that we would need to outreach with the community and possibly work with the college, that if we could get transportation to take the kids down if, if it was to be cut, and to allow them to do performances at local colleges. Work with rotary and other groups, because we would perform with rotary, and that was our high school choir. That was as far as it got, the choir. And then our band continued, and our band would run the most successful programs that we have since high school, which is the most winning program we probably have here. So I would definitely like to see that. As far as getting kids to participate in those programs, we really need to work with our kids to allow them to truly be into extracurricular activities at a time. And yes, on the books, it is allowed, but we have coaches and teachers who say that if you miss this practice, you're not gonna play, you'll never start, you'll always be on, you'll never be on varsity, you'll always be on JV if you participate in this. And that's not how it used to be, but hopefully that'll work.
Okay, so, I can imagine going to school and not being able to do any of those things that we've been talking about, if they're having art, music, drama, even shop class. I mean, those are things I looked forward to when I was going to school. I mean, that kinda, when you're in the nose and you grind into algebra and English and all that stuff, those subjects are like your brain, you get away with them. And that's very important to have them. Do I have an answer to how to get this back? No, I do not at this time. But that's something forward, that's something really, that's an issue that needs to be talked about and come up with a solution for. Yep.
So the, the fine arts. I have the privilege of sitting beside Betty for two years on this whole board. And a couple of times, she may have mentioned the fine arts. So, I actually went through some notes that I have from previous school board meetings. And maybe Betty said this may be discussed since I was aboard. Fine arts are a huge part of a well-rounded education. So, skill development, enhanced academics, just a ton of achievements can come just from being involved in our arts programs. So, yes, I mentioned at the beginning, we're gonna be challenged by budget restraints. How do we pay for it? So, grants we mentioned. Maybe we can find grants. Maybe when we, we get to that point where the arts might be in trouble. And I thought, community help. Someone mentioned, community help. So, we have no plans of cutting any fine arts. If our budget gets to that point, I would love to work with the community, I would love to work with grants. And I agree that our kids need that outlet. We talk so much about mental health and, and concerns in those areas. And this, this may be an outlet. And then, and this, the fine arts, our arts program, whether it be theater, or dance, or just visual arts, they need to stay. And we need to find a way as a community, if our school cannot afford that, to keep fine arts. So, very important, in my opinion.
Thank you. The next question. Betty will start. What is your stance on our early childhood or preschool program in our school system?
Well, I think preschool is a vital, vital part of the foundation of, of the early school system. Twenty years ago, I attended a conference at, in Columbus, and the gentleman that spoke was talking about preschool. And at that time, he was totally against it. He said, three years old, three-year-old kids need to be home with their mothers. At the time, I agreed, but not in this day and age. Families are, at best, completely blind, dysfunctional. So, kids don't have parents, parenting, and parents don't have parenting skills. And kids are not getting what they need at home at three years old. When we have kindergartners that, the curriculum at kindergarten that we expect these kids to do. So if a child comes to kindergarten, don't know the ABCs, can't recognize them, and they're expected to know those and so forth, debris, by the end of kindergarten, they're behind. So I think it's a vital, vital part of our foundation. And any program that you have, if you have a weak foundation, the roof is not gonna hold up. So, you need a very good foundation. And I think it's a vital, vital part. Do I think they need to be here all day? Probably not. But in our situation, I get it, it's about money. And, you know, so all day is, is more effective than the half-day. But by all means, I think it's a vital, vital part of our, of our school curriculum.
Sharon?
I am actually gonna agree with Betty, that yes, we do need to have it in our schools, specifically more for our lower-income and our children with developmental disabilities. Not only for the education part, but I would also show us that the kids are gonna get something else to eat, at least once a day while they're here, even if they're here for half-day.
I think Betty stole my notes. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with what she said. She was spot on on that deal. I mean, I see kids, my, not really my grand daughter, but Michael Seck, she's in preschool and, like, she's so far ahead of the other kids. And I went to pick her up one day and, she's bright. I mean, this stuff's gotta start early because these kids are coming in, they're not being able to count to ten. And it's definitely an issue in society everywhere, not just our school district. It's, it's a problem everywhere, definitely in kindergarten.
Right, early childhood development and how to pay for it. If, if I could figure that out, I'd probably be a millionaire somewhere at the State House. So, if you talk to a preschool, for example, I'm on the, I represent Welston at Buckeye Hills. We have an early childhood development program. And keeping it in the black is nearly impossible. But Superintendent Nash has made it clear that child, early childhood development is so important. So, I'm hoping, once that program gains some traction, maybe, maybe students from Buckeye Hills can come here and, and work in our, in our buildings and, and maybe cut costs for Welston City Schools. So, Mrs. Jackson, I don't know if you've heard of her, but she's a first grade teacher at Bundy. And occasionally she grades papers, and I've never seen any names, but she'll show me some of the things that, that the first graders are working on. And sometimes, the, the kids that get some help at home excel on worksheets and things like that. And maybe a child that doesn't have the support that he or she needs struggles in that area. And if we can, if we can get to that child early, I think kindergarten would be so much easier. And then first grade would be, that child would be advanced. Maybe they're not getting that support, but if, if our teachers can offer that early, I think it's great. But we've, we've gotta be able to pay for it. So, partnering, partnering with Buckeye Hills, partnering with groups in the community to show everybody how important it is. I may have to call them.
See, early childhood is, is very important. Unlike back in my days, it wasn't. We have talked about this in meetings many times, what are we gonna do? Where are we gonna go? How are we gonna fund it? But somehow we were arranged to find it. John just threw an idea out from Buckeye Hills that really I didn't know a whole lot about. But if they've got it there, again, maybe we can figure out how to create our own, that would help it out a whole lot. The, the big thing in the early childhood development, to my answer is, it's fairly new. And you've gotta give it time to see how successful it is. And then everybody goes, whoa, this might be just the thing we need to do. As like I say, in my days, you went to kindergarten if you wanted to. And if you didn't, you just started in the first grade the way you went. And you can't do that today because everything's different, much accelerated. So, I think our little childhood is very important, again, whether it's half-day, full-day, we argue back and forth on this. And I think what we're doing is in the right direction.
That one's start with Betty. Yep. Yes. What is your motivation to run for school board?
My motivation to run for school board is my concern for my children's education. I would, I would like to see more classes here. I would like to see the teachers stay. I would like to see some continuity and programs that can grow on where you have, you know, your biology line, your geometry, your chemistry line, calculus, and things like that. But I'm as important, I'm not the reason I'm here, it's where the education is, but it's more important than anything else that we do. It's the main reason we have a board of education.
My motivation, three of my, three of the children in our household went to Welston schools. Two have graduated, one in a business district. I've seen over years, as slowly things change, and it's over like, I don't know, fifteen years, that's how long it's been. So, I've just seen things kinda move, and my motivation is just getting involved. Granted, this is all new to me. I've never been on the school board or anything like that, but I just, I... that, but, uh, I just, for, I deal with issues and problems every day of my life, that's what I do, it's my job. And, uh, I just think I'm valuable to help the school board move in the right direction in the future.
Um, so, four years ago, um, I, uh, I decided to run for school board. Uh, my mother was a retired public school teacher, uh, my wife, uh, was a teacher, and, uh, I just enjoyed being around kids. Uh, when Josh showed an interest in youth sports, um, I volunteered coaching and, and improving facilities. And as they exited, as Josh exited the youth sports, um, I just, I was interested in the school. Um, I'm a contractor, uh, maintaining facilities is so important, so that interested me. I'd already worked for the district in, in, in different capacities, um, so, um, and then making sure, uh, teachers had support, our staff had, had support. Um, and then I got reawakening when I got elected, when you start mixing money and how to pay for all the opportunities that we want, it becomes quite a bit of a challenge. Um, and I like challenges, I really do. Um, so, I enjoy problem-solving, um, I enjoy sitting down at a game and someone telling me, um, some, some ways that, uh, we can improve. Um, I'm an approachable person and, uh, that attracted me. So, presented with a problem, I enjoy problem-solving and, um, and my, and my kids are in the district. Uh, Josh is gone, Justin will be graduating, and Jace is a seventh grader. And, um, I want to make sure I can do as much as I can for, um, it choked up. Um, my kids and everybody else's kids, sorry.
Well, my reasoning has been for years, like since nineteen seventy-four, first time I was ever on school board, has always been for the children or the kids, the community. Because I believe success in all areas builds confidence, discipline, community, pride, and more. So, I always like to be around the kids, know what's going on, uh, see what they're learning, what they're not, what can we help, where can we do things to help them, be it athletically, academically, or any way at all. So, but again, my main reason for running is for the kids.
Uh, my main motivation for running, uh, you might say it's in my DNA. Um, I taught school for thirty years, um, I wanted to be a teacher in the second grade, I've always had an interest in our school. Um, after I retired, I tutored in Lynn County for ten years in reading and, and, and math. And, um, I think it's an honor to serve on the school board, to, um, do the best for our students and to, to try to, to impress upon them to, uh, find a pathway that they want to pursue to be a, um, a productive member of our society and to instill in them that they need to be a lifelong learner. You can never stop learning. And they will be, um, faced with jobs that haven't even been created yet. Uh, when I was in the school, do you, did anyone talk about a mastinoff? We had to be meant to the moon. It's said in our Chinese book that some day maybe they would go to the moon. So, these kids have, have so many opportunities and I, to be a part of that, um, would be an honor.
What are your ideas about supporting students with disabilities? Staffing is dwindling and those that are left are being stretched thin.
Can you repeat, can you repeat the question?
We didn't hear that. Sorry. Let me repeat that, I'm sorry. What are your ideas about supporting students with disabilities? Staffing is dwindling and those that are left are being stretched thin.
What are your ideas for supporting disabilities and learning?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Well, that's obviously a tough question that has to park, so, um, every dis- every, every student, every job we have in the school district is, is unique. So, every disability, whether it's a physical, mental, is, I mean, to me, you almost have to treat, evaluate each one of them and treat each one, none of them the same, so, I mean, currently I'm not sure what our, uh, what we stand on now as far as our classes for those kids or the, with the regular kids, are they in special classes? I think years ago, they weren't, they were in their own classroom. So, uh, do I know the answer for that? No, at this time I do not, but that's something that is very important, is very important in life, because kids with disabilities, that, just because they have a disability, they might be different, but they're not, they're still the same, you know, they still have their own mind, they can, they, some of them are just as smart as anybody else, so, I mean, that's very difficult, something very difficult for me to answer, but I'm looking for the challenge of, of working on that, figuring a solution for that.
Um, so, kids with disabilities, uh, many of our last, uh, our three boys, um, uh, don't have any disabilities per se. Um, so, tough question, just like Jamie said. So, uh, I just wrote down some notes, kids need to be loved, kids need to have a purpose. Um, so, some, some of our, uh, some of our, all of our aides, all of our aides do an excellent, excellent job, uh, working one-on-one throughout the school day to make sure kids with disabilities, they want to get to the classes they need to, to support our staff. Um, and, uh, again, the, the funding is going to be a challenge and I'm, and I'm sure there's grants, whether we can improve a sidewalk, whether we can improve a, a restroom, or, or make that day more inviting for someone with a disability, that, that may be enough in itself. Um, and then, then the challenge begins in the, uh, in the classroom, uh, making sure that this, um, the staff person has patience and, and is able to work, uh, with that child. Um, we're a public school, we, we've got to off, offer the same opportunities to every one of our students. And yes, it'll be a challenge, it's a challenge every day, and there's, uh, people in this building, people in our other buildings that, that do an excellent job, and, uh, we'll continue to do that.
Well, I, I agree, that's a toughy question. Uh, you, you need to, uh, have the right teachers, the right places, uh, the aides, everybody to help, uh, need to support Mrs. Massey and her ideas as to what do we need to do, when do we need to do it, where are they at? And I think our staff we have is very, very good at this present time and all that area. Uh, it's, it's just a very tough question and, uh, you, you can't cut funding because the government's going to get you if nobody else does. And those children need all the help they can get and they deserve all they can get. So, I, uh, I, I think that supporting them, loving them, caring for them, helping them, and giving them a purpose to go on, uh, is very, very big. And whether it be sometimes athletic, a year ago, I was helping with the, uh, cross-country and we had an autistic young gentleman from another school and he wanted to run cross-country. And we were with, on the golf cart and we took his dad with us. And we had to kind of help him to get along, we couldn't get on the golf cart, cause he was loose. So, he comes down here to the baseball field, comes back and he says, "I quit, I'm not going to do this anymore." And it's kind of a, a little bit of a funny statement, his dad says, "Okay, we won't stop the golf cart out when we go over to get chocolate, I think." And you don't get to eat there. He says, "What?" And he told us that was his favorite class. So, he ran rest of the race and finished, that's the ending of the story, and he played well.
Well, certainly, students with disabilities, um, have just as much right as, um, as any other student, every child regardless of their ability, has the right to a quality education and the support. And it is our job to provide those students with the support staff, the best teachers that we can, and to include these children in all of our, uh, aspects of, of school throughout the day and in, um, the different activities and so forth, to make them a part of the, to feel a part of the total school community. Um, when I was teaching, I'd like to sit in wheelchair and they, they participated in film day and, uh, a big thing for them is Special Olympics, that they have a prior grant and that's a big thing for those children. And, um, they, uh, deserve the, the right to, to succeed, and that's our goal, to get every child to succeed at something. And they equal want to have a, a very, uh, good life and, and have a, a goal to have a location or a trade that they can, they can do and, uh, it's a very vital part of our, of our whole system is the special needs, special needs.
I don't know where the funding would come from that would help or provide additional assistance and additional aids for our special needs kids, but I will say that if we have the funding for students to have an aide to walk with them one-on-one, or they have a classroom alone, one-on-one with a teacher because of discipline issues, then we can surely find a way aside and finding to cover the special needs kids and make sure that their, their issues are addressed and helped and they get, they get a fair education they need.
Thank you. We'll be back to Utah. Given the recent economic challenges, what steps would you take to ensure the district remains fiscally responsible? Okay, I'll repeat that again. I've talked, I've, I've talked for so many years, I just quickly differ. Given the recent economic challenges, what steps would you take to ensure the district remains fiscally responsible?
Fiscally responsible, um, so, deciding what opportunities to provide, what opportunities not to provide, um, and still be fiscally responsible for that. Um, I've always, I've always, uh, applied common sense to decision-making on my personal life, on my business life, and for the past four years, I think I've used common sense. So, um, well, that's tough, you know, um, we've got some challenges ahead, um, you know, maybe, um, do the majority rule? Do, do we, we find a program that has the most students? Who would be most effective, uh, maintain those programs? Um, that would help us stay, uh, fiscally responsible, but then, then we cut opportunities and that, that affects kids and those are, those are really tough decisions. Um, Laura Briggs does, does an amazing job, Scott Noren, uh, amazing job as a superintendent who's in there, uh, and, uh, I work with Scott and Laura to make sure we stay, uh, fiscally responsible, um, constantly looking for grants and ways to, to improve our facilities, um, and, uh, maybe partner with, uh, businesses in the area, uh, to help, help maintain a program that might be in danger, uh, but then still stay fiscally responsible to our district. Um, these, these are, these are really tough things. Um, but, um, we, we are not going to, we're going to approve a budget, we're going to stay within that budget and, uh, uh, thank you, Mama.
Yeah, it, it's a tough question, again, we have not, we've seen the forecast, uh, quick, was today or this evening, and, uh, we have to figure out how do we stay in there, whether it be taxes that you may have to raise, hopefully the government will help us out, which you know better than that. Uh, you don't want to raise any kind of a tax, you don't want to do those things, you, you have to try to stay within a budget that we're maybe presented, we know where we're at, we know where we're going. Again, you could join maybe with other communities or school districts and insurances, our insurance costs have been high because we have lots of people that just go to the district because they need to, whatever, but they go, so our insurance costs have been high. So, you try to get all that kind of stuff in control and help it out. And again, as I said a little bit ago, the, our superintendent and I have talked about, there is some nights, there's some rooms, there's some places that we may be able to teach certain things that would be like the old days, uh, in my days and several of them here. You had Shaw, I mean Shaw is not necessarily the thing I'm talking about, it's something that you can relate to, that if you can arrange to get some of those classes and have our teachers teaching them, we would keep roughly eighty percent of the money, we only get twenty percent of that hundred percent now. So, if it's six thousand dollars, we'd be keeping roughly eight, forty-eight hundred dollars, which would be a major improvement for, that's every child, that's not for the, every child that's in that class. It would not be out of here, would not be away from here. So, a lot of that is, you've got to know that it depends on, your money depends on each one of the children. And I'll say-
Well, it is a tough question and I think, um, the main thing that we should do would be the superintendent, the president of the board would sit down and make a list of what we, our priorities to, uh, what we could cut without affecting the student's achievement. Um, I, I was in the seventies, I think, I'm going to say seventy-six or seven, we had, we were in the state loan fund, there was no money. Uh, teachers bought their own supplies, we pooled our money, uh, teachers went to Columbus, bought our duplicating fluid, each, each teacher, uh, bought their own duplicating paper. Those days are gone, um, but there was just no money for any thing. Did the teach, did the kids still get quality education? I think they did, because of the teachers. I remember, um, Carol Rupert with the Hopeums in Columbus and bought duplica- I'm telling my age now, you don't even know what a duplicating machine is, but you would, uh, we didn't have their us, it was all duplicating and such. Um, I think we could, then that our supplies, uh, be more affordable, we should, uh, then that our professional development have more in-house, maybe send one or two to a professional development, have them that can teach the people here, um, but we would have to tighten our belts, just like you have to do with your own budget at home when things get tight. So, um, and I think we look at the top down, we look at our administrators, do we have an overabundance of administrators from when they retire? Do we replace them or just, can we wear, uh, administrator wear two hats instead of one? So, it would be tough choices, but if we all look together, I would say, we would succeed.
Uh, I haven't had a deep dive into my current budget and the numbers that we're working with, um, but I do believe there are grants out there, I know that there's been grants in the past that have not been successful and obtained for the schools. Uh, the city has grants that they can also, uh, usually work with the school and they can do it as a group and go in to get facilities that are combined and with- and go in to get facilities that are combined and with our nonprofit organizations within the city. Um, could also work with the state and get grants and work with things that way. Another way is to do it is to reach out to our local officials for our area, make them know that we are in, you know, low-income community with not a lot of income and they're the ones that would need, you know, hey, this is what we're missing, this is what our kids in Welston are not getting and the other kids in Columbus or somewhere else may need it. And then we need these to, to survive. And if we have these parameters, parameters that on this state that says, these are all the classes that we need to have, these are all everything that you need to pass, these are all the tests you need to have, then they also need to understand that there needs to be funding to come along with that. And I don't know where that funding would come from. Um, I would hope that they possibly reconsider their budget that they're working on, except they're discussing in the legislation. But I think that if we look with our community, maybe they have to work out something for funding and possibly consider reducing our, our property footprint of areas that aren't being used so at least you're not paying to mow that grass in an empty field or things like that, possibly sell it or use it for something else, something like that.
Okay, um, so, kind of like what Sharon said, without seeing the numbers and actually knowing what's going on, uh, okay, when you're doing any kind of cuts of all, all options should be explored. And I, I'm a person who's for jobs, you know, of course, that's my job, but I think any job cuts should be the last, last business of anything you do. All options should be explored before any job, teaching job out there, the janitor, the room, hence from the top to the bottom. All options need to be looked at before it comes to that point. That's really asked for me, I'm, I'm always been that way and always be that way. So I just, that's what it comes to, working collectively as a group and just figuring it out in these situations.
Okay, I'm done. I'll give you each two minutes for a closing statement and we'll start at this end and go to you.
So my, okay, uh, I had, I had remarks at the beginning. I, I, I want to say thank you to Terry Gill, twenty years on the school board. Terry, thank you, all right? Appreciate you being here. He's retiring and, uh, we'll have a new school board member and that's exciting. Okay, now closing remarks here. Okay, no fights or promises would be. I will continue to use a common sense approach to move our district forward. I want families to choose Welston City Schools because our teachers deliver high qual- high-quality education. I will follow Ohio law, follow Ohio advice code in my decision-making. I will do what is best for our students, however, I know I'm only one of five. I work together with all board members, this is very important. Each board member needs to be a team player. I want everyone to know I will be an approachable board member. Uh, public education got me where I'm at today, I'm grateful for that and, uh, this is an opportunity for me to give back. Over the past four years, I was involved with constructing a new fitness facility. I have represented Welston on Buckeye Young School Board. Um, I have attended several school board training sessions. Most recently, I've been invited to serve on our, uh, Welston Recreation Board. Uh, our board has received, uh, reports that chronic absenteeism is down and test scores are up. Uh, do we have areas to improve? We do, we do have areas to improve. Um, I do, I, I look forward to working together, uh, as a school board member with our teachers, our staff, our superintendent, treasurer, to make our district the best in the county and the state.
Well, I will lifelong rest in Welston for the family deeply connected to our schools, including a wife, daughter, son, and eighth grade grandson, who have all attended and currently attend Welston City Schools. Our district has always been close to our, my mission has always been simple, to help our students reach their fullest potential, both in the classroom and in life. For more than fifty years, I have volunteered countless hours, athletic events, school functions, community activities, and always striving to support our youth. Currently, I service the vice president of Welston City School Board, where I have worked to strengthen opportunities for students academically, athletically, and more because I believe success in all areas builds confidence, discipline, community, pride, and more. I also would like to say thank you to Terry Gill, like Mr. Jackson did, for all his years of service. I have also been here during the building of our new, uh, facilities. I've given my opinion on what do we do with the streets, the roads, the, uh, parking lots and doesn't always come out the way that everybody thinks it was supposed to, but that's part of something that I do since I am a project inspector on the outside. So I think that, uh, the best thing that we've got going for us is our children. Again, we have great teachers and our school system is very, very capable of going from third place in a report card to first, which we have done in the last three years. So I thank everybody that has been involved in that. And hope everyone gets out the boat and I deeply grateful for your support from the past and I hope you will support me again.
Well, most people know me, I've been in Welston for fifty years. Um, Phil and I live in Wimby Lane, we've been married for fifty-two years. Um, we have a daughter, Lily Seismore, she is the principal Sunday. I have a grandson, Bryce, he graduated from OU in May. Uh, I was raised on a farm in Dint County, graduated from the Hart High School before the consolidation and then graduated from OU with a BS in education and got my masters from Mary Grove College, I believe in nineteen ninety-nine. I spent thirty years with teaching, uh, mainly fourth grade math, the last seventeen years within Welston. Um, from then, I went to Dint County and like I said, I did tutoring for ten years in reading and math. And, um, I come from a family of teachers. I have two sisters that retired with thirty-four years of teaching, one in Lovett and one in Tri-County in Knoxville. Um, I have, um, two brothers, one taught in Dint County and the other one taught oil oil drilling at the Vocational College, Hoffman College. And so I come from a family of teachers and I've always been interested in teachers. I wanted to be a teacher in the second grade and I had a wonderful second grade teacher and I just wanted to be like her. Um, I think I bring to the table the experience and common sense and our students are our biggest asset and that's what it's all about. Without the students, there'd be no need for anybody else in the school system. So that's our main focus and we want to give them the best education possible.
My name is Sharon Rutter, I was born and raised here, um, until I got married. My husband was in the military and we traveled all over the world for twenty-one years. And then, uh, when his time was up, we said, "Hey, we're going home." That's where our family is and that's where we wanted to be. We had kids who had gone through five different school districts, um, up until they started at Welston, uh, when we knew back from St. Peter Paul and then they moved on to Welston. And, uh, that's tough on a kid to see them move around and be new in a school. Um, but we wanted to be here because we love the small community and we love that if my kid, my kids were little and they were going out on a bike or I'd be getting text messages from everybody all over town saying, "Hey, we saw your kids. They're still alive, haven't been hit by a car." And if they were doing something wrong, uh, someone would let us know and, and that's a good thing and that's what we love about it. We wouldn't, they would never have the freedom that they had if we were in a big city. Um, however, big cities also have big schools and they have the gifted programs and they have things like that. And I would really like to see something like that come here. And even if we don't have the, the teachers in person, I know that we offer Apex classes, which is digital learning and they have a, basically like a, a long-term stuff. I would say in the classroom, the advantage is the classroom, so the kids are actually learning what they need to learn online. And right now, we do that for some subjects and I would like to open it up to more subjects so the kids can actually learn something that they need, need or want to learn that may not be offered by a teacher here. Um, and they could do that individually in a classroom. They would all, like, thirty kids would be in a classroom and they would all be working on their computers and, and learning what they want and that's a way that we could bring the science and we can bring the advanced classes to Welston. Um, and the kids that may learn better, that may have a disability, maybe this is how they would look at the media or help there if they would need, just do something like that. Um, I, I do love schools, I do love extracurriculars, um, I don't want to say that I don't love those things. Uh, I hope we finalize the special program, John Nero had it before me and I'm pretty supportive. I'm so, guess that's all I have.
Uh, okay, I believe our district could be better for our students, our teachers, the entire support staff and our community. But while I respect the effort, the, uh, past and current board has done, I also see opportunities for fresh perspectives, new energy and stronger teamwork to move our schools forward. Our students deserve a board that listens, engages, takes bold yet thoughtful actions to ensure every child has access to a high-quality education. I want to focus on building trust, improving transparency and promote teamwork between parents, educators, and administrators. This is not about pointing fingers or should be, it's about coming together to create solutions that work. Open communication, responsible leadership, and shared commitment to our kids. I believe we can make our schools a source of pride for the entire community. Once again, thanks for putting this on and everybody attending and everybody.
I want to thank all of you for coming this evening. And I want to thank all of you up here for coming and answering our questions and participating. We greatly appreciate it. And there are refreshments in the back, so please help yourself. We don't want to take those home with us. Um, they were provided, um, from New Kirk's Bakery, so they're very delicious. Um, help yourself.
Well, I'll just, can I say one more thing? I just want to thank you and all the WTA for putting this together. I think it was very beneficial and, and I enjoy doing it.
You're welcome. Have a safe trip.